Good evening. This is the regular business meeting of the West Side Forest Selectment, February 12th, 2018. We'll open the meeting with a blue flag. Please join.
.................................................................................................................. Do we have the present agenda? Any motion or comment for the present agenda?
I'm going to motion that we approve the minutes of the January 22nd meeting.
And I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting and all opposed. That is passed. The next regular meeting, regular business meeting of the West Side Forest Selectment will be February 26th, 2018, right here at the town office at 5:30. The warrant, both municipal warrant as well as school warrant is waiting here. I believe we've already acted on it, but if not, it's making its way around. Okay, moving on. New selectmen's comments, announcements. I have nothing. Adam?
Did you want to mention about the workshops that you brought up?
Yeah, sure. I'm not sure who brought this up, but I was talking to Adam a couple of weeks ago. We legally, we can't get together and talk. Sure, we can't. However, we can, except for the regular meeting. However, we can if we public notice meeting. And, but we don't want to have a meeting unless it's, we either need to or it's regular with these kids. But we can however have workshops. And workshops are, workshops are good. Those are also public, public notification, which is fine. Generally, in our regular meetings, it's usually open to public comment and public participation, which we encourage. Oh, we don't have to do that, but we do. And traditionally, we'll continue it. In a workshop, however, we don't need to do that. It can just be us sitting down, can't, can't have any action, can't take any action on anything, but we can sit and just talk amongst ourselves about just stuff or business. We can't, we can't do anything that leads to taking action, but we can get into details, such kind of thing. Things that, short of public notification, we're not allowed to do and still be legal. For instance, we can't, after this meeting is over, we can't stand up and fire while I'm talking about what we did just now. I mean, we could, but it wouldn't be legal. So, I would like to just throw out there, perhaps a quarterly or whenever we deem it necessary, or whenever we feel like it, if we just want to sit down and talk. I.e., wing farm. Do we ever want to talk about a wing farm? Maybe, not under the pressure of camera, the pub, the public, you know. We want to just sit down and talk. The workshop is nothing new. It's always been available to us, but it never dawned on me to do it. And in other committees, I've done workshops all the time. I don't know why I never thought of it for this one.
I think it would be helpful, especially for new selectmen, and especially with the wing farm.
Yep.
Because I am them. I don't have the background or the history.
Yep, okay. And we don't need to take any action. It's just a suggestion. Yes, David?
I think down the road, these workshops will work out. Even as they were workshop in the school board, just to talk.
We should, we should have been doing it all along.
Certainly is a good idea to do that.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, just to talk without doing business business, just to talk about how things are going.
Just to talk, yeah.
And what each board's roles are, and just to have more communication between the two boards. Because we don't want a school board, government, any town, selectman government. We want one government.
Well, I agree with you. And as former chairman of the withdrawal and put-together committee, speak on behalf of four members of it, one of whom is a school board member now, Dennis Cruz, that was our intent, to have an open dialogue, cooperation, and it's not going to be two, two factions. And we tried to steer away from it as much as we possibly could without stepping on our toes, stepping on a lot of laws, which there were certainly plenty of those, that we had to minefield what we wanted to step through. And perhaps in the same spirit, we can perhaps resurrect that intent and move forward. It's cool. I think it's a good idea. I'm glad you brought it up.
I think it's a good idea. Because I think there's things that we, both sides learn, but I mean, just how they operate. I mean, they're fairly new with it. And this whole question we had back at the end of the meeting about carryover or not, and I think some of the board, the school board members were kind of like, we really can't do that. I mean, some I think understood, but I think a lot of them do not know what they can and can't do financially in relation to the town's finances. And that's a kind of philosophical type of how you, government does stuff, kind of.
Yeah.
Which is good for new members on both select board and the school board, to understand.
But just that the members to know each other besides the town meeting.
And the, the issue that Steve talked about, the town meeting, we've got a thing coming up, same thing, only not with the school. The fact of the matter is, if they do or no, they can structure the budget in such a way that through the budget process, and then it goes to vote, rather than having to carry forward the amount. They'll zero out an amount and just refund it, but refund it fully. And for virtually a nanosecond, they won't have any money, but it'll be right back, and then it's the next year, batch of money too, so it really doesn't, in the day-to-day operations, doesn't, whether it's to carry forward or not, isn't it? It's a really bookkeeping thing. Madeline, I heard from the town administrator, he ran the idea by Madeline just quickly, and she's, she's for it as well. So we'll, it's an option open to us. I'd say we won't schedule anything, but if we want to do something, we'll do it. And all we have to do is just run a notice.
Sounds good to me. And if the school board meeting with them is a great idea.
Good. I think it's a good idea too. Thank you. Okay. Citizens' comments. Yes, sir?
I have one to make. It's a good, it's a good comment.
Is it? Okay. Then the floor is yours.
I had spoken to Adam a few weeks ago about the changes that have happened out at the town recycling and what's the total, the transfer station?
Yeah.
That's, that's the word I was looking for. New guy that's come in there to handle the relationship with public on Saturdays from eight to two and Tuesdays from three to five, has done an outstanding job of cleaning that place up, organizing it so it's much more user-friendly. Plus, he is just a wonderful personality to interact with. He's supportive, he grabs stuff, helps you do dispose of your garbage or whatever, and get it in the right place. And I had made a comment to Adam about how I thought this was a great change. And I want the selectmen to know that Adam took it upon himself, I didn't know this, to call his boss and compliment him. And he was called in by his boss and congratulated for doing a great job. And I think there was even a, possibly a paid, paid.
That's great.
Plus for him as a result of that. And I know other people have probably commented to Adam as well.
Yes.
Maybe not, but I, all our neighbors are just thrilled with the change that happened out there. So, I took it upon myself to tell him a couple of times that he was doing a great job, and he knew I had said that, and he came up to tell me that he'd gotten called in by his boss and was really anxious, what did I do wrong? And it was quite the opposite. He was complimented for a great job.
That's good.
And I just think that ought to be known. So I wanted to make a comment. That's it.
It's nice, it's nice that his boss.
I'd like to second that. Bob, thank you for doing that. And Adam, thank you for following through. Chris is an outstanding human being, and he makes going to the dump really fun.
Yes. That's the thing. I think a lot of people know him by first name, unlike any of the predecessors. Everybody knows it's Chris.
It's Chris.
He introduced himself, and he wants to know who everybody is, and.
Isn't it a shame when you go to do business that it's the exception that you get outstanding service rather than the norm, like it used to be once upon a time, when I was young there?
I, I just think it's not just that pleasantness of his personality, but it's also the way he's organized things that makes it a lot better, so much better and so much easier for us to do what we all are trying to do when we go out there.
He even scrubs up some speakers and plays music.
Good. Good.
Well, don't judge it.
Okay, moving on. Any committee, department, or work group report? We have the, oh yeah, let's back up to selectmen's comments for a minute. We have scheduled a executive session. I'd like to put on the record that we will go into executive session at the conclusion of this, this meeting, I'm sorry, before the conclusion of this meeting, but after the conclusion of regular business. And I'd like to invite the investment committee, if they wouldn't go into executive session with us.
Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee.
They want you in the house.
Okay. Economic Development Committee, if they wouldn't join us in executive session, we put that on the record, if they wouldn't, Carly, thank you. Okay, regular business items, appointments. Adam?
The board has asked to consider the appointment of Deborah Bruce and Justin Hennessy to the Board of Appeals. If the board will entertain those, I have the appointments papers available.
And these are both re-ups?
Reappointments.
Yes. Should have made that clear, I'm sorry.
Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we approve Deborah Bruce and Justin Hennessy for the Board of Appeals.
I'll second the motion. And is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor and all those opposed. Deborah Bruce and Justin Hennessy are both reappointed to the Board of Appeals. Thank you. Okay, item number two, town proposed budget review. I will say, Adam?
So, what I'm going to do is, if the board is open to it, I'm going to, mostly for the benefit of the board, but also the, anybody who decides to watch the video after the fact, I'm going to run through the budget with a little bit more detail than usual, just so that we have an understanding of what things are proposed to change, increase, decrease, and so forth. One of the first things the board will notice about their books is they're very similar to the way they were last year, with the exception of the proposed budget is actually broken down by department with a tab, so it's rather easy to follow along. Now, that was something that the budget committee was in favor of. Oops, did you need? So I'll start rates, rates where people care the most about. So as it sits right now, the total budget as it stands is $150,000 more than last year. The explanation for that we'll get into as we get going along. That includes a placeholder for the school and a placeholder for the county tax. So where we want to start is under proposed budget, under government, which is the O1. Under this portion here is where all the payroll is, with the exception of the shellfish warden, for instance. All the staff is listed in here. I put placeholders in at this time for all of the payroll amounts, because the raises have not been established yet. We turn to the next section, which is the insurance and benefits. FICA and Medicare, those again, that can't be established until payroll is established. But when we look at health insurance and so forth, you'll notice that the retirement line has gone down. This is because we have an employee who no longer is enrolled in the retirement program, but you do need to keep in mind the fact that the employer rate has gone from 9.6% to 10%. Health insurance, this has increased because of a rate increase. Same with workers' comp. On the plus side though, the volunteer firefighter insurance has decreased. One of the reasons for that is because we have a few less folks on the fire department, and it's based on your roster. If we flip over to town administration, now I'm cruising over the things that didn't change and not mentioning those, but if you have questions about any of those, please feel free. So the town report is, one of the first things you'll see is there's an increase. In short, over the last few years, we have been backing off on how many reports we order because we just had too darn many. We went down to 250 copies last year, and that didn't seem to do the trick, we ran out. So this year, we're looking to purchase 300 instead of 250. This has an increased cost based on last year's cost per report. We need about $2,600 in order to pull that off. Registry of deeds, I worked with Julie, the tax collector, on this, decreasing this from 2,500 to 2,000. This is just based on what she's seen over this last year and how much money she needs for that line. She feels 2,000 is sufficient. Professional dues, again, just some increases there. It's a $200 increase for that line. That's covering things like membership to MMA and those type of things. Heating oil, I actually asked the tax collector to double-check this to make sure we're all on the same page, but usage in the building for heat, which is not using as much, so we're going to decrease that by $500. Cell phones, this line has been increased by $60. Cell phones include the siphon for the administrator's cell phone, the animal control officer's cell phone, ACO, animal control, fire chief, and code enforcement. But what we need to include in this this year is, as we know, we have a camera now up at the San Salt Building. That costs us $5 a month for our cell phone company, so that's been added in here for an increase in $60. Water cooler, increased by $100 just because we're actually drinking more water. I think we want to discourage that. Contingency, this is where we get our money for, this is where we get our money for items such as paying for Vision and Trio and all of our software and IT services. This has been increased by 18, excuse me, where did I put that?
$18,000.
Yep, correct, $1890. So, the reason for this increase is, in part, $40 of that is an increase in the rates for Gov Office. Now, Gov Office is our website slash email provider. The other piece of that though, $1,850, is so that we would be able to purchase through Vision, the, being able to put the property cards online, as we've talked about in the past some. This is not to disregard any of the thoughts we've had about potentially moving from Vision to Trio. It's, that's still in the works. The staff is still working on getting more details and seeing if that's a viable option. One way or another, I think the town would be wise, just as a service to the community, to put the property cards online. I've included a list in your book of, we need to tie a breakdown of that contingency line to include, you know, IT services and the other things I mentioned, what they each cost. Mapping for tax maps. Mapping this year, we're going to, looking at using the same person who did the tax maps last time for us, which is Jim Thomas. He, we've been doing the maps every other year, so this would be the year to do the maps. $3,250 is what he's looking at charges this year. The quality of the product, that seems like a fair price.
No, this is, sorry, you know, this is the maps upstairs, like the tax maps.
Tax maps, yes. Tax maps, it also includes, you know, digital copies and the, you know, the PDF files, the GIS parcel data, and all that stuff.
Okay. Would it, if we were having another one of those made up, a zoning map, would it be included?
I didn't include that in my notes, but if I remember correctly, it does. But let me double-check before we commit to that, but I'm pretty sure that it does.
Okay.
Voting for office supplies, that was increased simply because we've started using the electronic voting ballots so that, for the local election. And what that does, it cuts down on time and errors at the voting booth, so that's a big piece of the voting supplies going up. Voting for the food budget, increase that by 50 bucks so we can continue to provide lunch and other refreshments, if you will, to the voting staff on voting days. Cleaning and paper supplies, that increased by $50. That's simply because we have somebody who's cleaning now, who's just using more of the products and doing a good job. Alarm company rates is increased by $25. Lawn care, everybody's favorite topic from last year. Lawn care has artificially decreased by $30. The reason that we see a decrease is that last year, it should have been set at 3550, but it was mistakenly put at 3580. So, it's a $30 decrease, but this includes town office, taking care of the bamboo next to the town office, Bull Rock Boat Landing, Littlefield School, and the meeting house. So, if I'm going too fast, somebody yell at me. Legal services, we flip to that. I've left that at $20,000 again, from last year. Every year, we've kind of tweaked that down. $20,000 though, it's, from my perspective, that's a good insurance policy if we have litigation or something come up that we need to utilize our legal services. It's nice to have that, that budget there.
We'll see.
I'm here to argue with you, sir. Welfare. If the board remembers, in years past, welfare had a fairly high balance. This is a carry-forward account. Currently, the unexpendited balance is about $16,700. The thought process for the last couple of years was to allow this to wean itself down to about $10,000. And at the point it got to the $10,000 mark, we would start contributing to it in $5,000 increments each year. Unless, of course, we found we needed to put more. This year, where we're at $16,700, it's my recommendation that we continue to not contribute to this fund, you know, this budget this time. Next year, I suspect that we'll probably have to put $5,000 in there. So protection, if we go to the next tab, this is where you find your fire, fire department, ambulance, and so forth. So the fire chief has been gracious enough to actually do a pretty good detailed budget, which is in there as well, but I'll give you a quick rundown. The protection for the ambulance, ambulance services, we've had to tweak that up over the years, but I think we finally hit the sweet spot. $60,000 looks like it's going to cover that. Just as a point of clarity, we do not pay Bath Fire, Bath Ambulance, a set rig to have the contract. We pay them per call, and that's how we're billed. So, we pay them per call, we also pay them for services rendered that they cannot collect on. So, and that's outlined in the back of your budget books where it says contracts, the copy of that contract is back there for your reference.
Have they set a rate on that? Because I heard there might be an increase. Has that been?
This year's is already signed, so this year's set.
They've been threatening an increase for several years and never really did it.
Yeah. Hydrants, this is again, when it comes to the hydrants. Last year, we had the amount, we had the hydrant amount, but then after budget season was over, they came back at us and said it was increased. So, this year, I called and I spoke to the superintendent directly of the water district, and $27,544 is what he said it's going to be for this year for the hydrant rentals. So I've included that in here, so it is a difference from last year's budget, increase of some, but it's the same as, is the same as last year, just because of the timing of things. Hey, Ron.
Hey, Ron. How are you doing?
Electricity, this has been decreased. The fire chief, the fire chief, as you know, he's been kind of grown into his position. There's a few items that he wasn't 100% sure on, so we over-budgeted for a little while, just to make sure he had enough. When it comes to electricity, he's finding he only needs $4,05800 to run the place. Natural gas, same thing, he only needs $4,000, not $5,000. Telephone, he's decreasing that as well, same premise. Alarm, on the other hand, has increased by $100, and you can see in his notes, it's increases in service fees and so forth. The internet is another one that has increased, and you can see that in his notes, but it's an increase of $150. Billing expenses, again, he's increased that by $50. Vehicle repair and maintenance, this has actually decreased from $12,700 to $1,10200. This $1,500 decrease is because the fire chief found a new vendor to handle his pump testing for the trucks, and he feels that the new vendor is disqualifying, does this a good job, he's does it $1,500 cheaper. So, nothing wrong with the fire chief being approval. New equipment for the fire department. Last year, I'm trying to remember, he, I believe they purchased some hazmat-type suits or something to that effect, which required $85, 36. This year, he's only asking for $42, 70. And the reason he's asking for that is he wants to purchase a portable, portable water pump, and what this is for is for forest firefighting and so forth. It's a, like a leaf blower that you put on, like backpack leaf blower. What it allows is, allows a fireman to, you know, bring it out into the woods, tap into a water source, and it's a self-contained pump, so they can operate far away from resources and so forth. Last year, we also dumped the $20,000 capital account for the fire department. The fire department chief is asking that we, again, that we put this account back in there. So he's asking for $20,000 to be contributed to the capital account. We flip to animal control. So one of the things you're going to see that's different this year is that animal control traditionally has only included professional dues and new equipment. And the animal shelter was always listed under community donations. From my perspective, the animal shelter is not a community donation, it's a contract service that we have. So I've moved that from community donations, and I put it under animal control, because it's a clear animal control expense. That contract is in the back of your book, if you care to look at it. So our animal control, or excuse me, animal shelter cost every year is $1,877, $1,877. So that's been added in there. Professional dues, that's for his membership to different animal- Professional dues, that's for his membership to different animal control trainings and so forth, is the same, sixteen fifty. New equipment has been reduced from three hundred and fifty dollars down to two hundred dollars. And that's because last year, he had to get a catch pole and some other fancy stuff, but this year, he only needs, uh, to get a couple of box traps. Seems like a reasonable request. Education, it's too early to tell, I don't, the superintendent and I have not been able to sit down and go over a budget. Um, we have agreed that after the first reading, when she presents it to the school board, that we'll sit down after the fact and we'll go over what the, where things are currently landing. So, what I've done is I've used that placeholder from last year, the three million ninety-eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars, again, as a placeholder.
And that's the actual cost of, that we had to raise last year.
Local contribution cost, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. If we go to shell, shellfish, warden, and boat. So, what we've done here, this one's pretty straightforward, shellfish wages, those will be determined with the rest of the wages. The extra hours, last year, for the first time, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars in case we needed to use them a little bit more. We haven't ended up having to use them at all this year more. So, based on that, it was pulling that back to a thousand instead of fifteen hundred. Was a thought process that a thousand will allow us to use them more if we need to, but clearly, we didn't need the full fifteen hundred for that line. Town boat, the town boat, there was a line in there for travel reimbursement for the town boat. The thing is, with the town boat, we supply the gas, the, the fuel for the town boat, so we don't need to reimburse travel for the town boat. Whoever's hauling the town boat around can apply for mileage, it just will come out of the appropriate weather, you know, shellfish line, or whether, whomever, so we don't need that hundred dollar travel reimbursement for the town boat. Harbor master, Joe is a very, very needy man, attempted to. So, the harbor master, everything is gonna stay the same for him, including, he's asked for harbor master supplies. Last year, if I remember correctly, he bought some boobies or something that equaled nine hundred and fifty dollars. This year, he needs to purchase some no wake signs for New Meadows. And what he's hoping is, he hasn't finished pricing him out, but he's strongly believes nine hundred and fifty dollars will cover the cost of these signs. So, he asked if I would leave it at nine fifty, and we'll iron out the details on the cost. Sanitation, this is, uh, recycling fees as well as, um, the recycling committee, that's for those hazardous waste days. We seem to be right on target with both of those, so leaving those the same. Public works, that's what everybody looks forward to when they do. So, public works, a few changes here, created an office supply line for public works, something that wasn't there before. That allows us so that if we want to, for instance, the light bulb blows at the sand and salt building, we just need to get a new light bulb. Um, when we were having vandalism problems at the sand and salt shed and needed to get a camera system for up there, that's where, you know, that's where the money would have come from and so forth. So, I started, started a line there, it's set at two hundred dollars, I think that was a good starting point. Signs, that's been reduced from twelve hundred to a thousand. Reason for the small decrease is simply this last year, the town was able to take advantage of a sign grant the main DOT put forth. And how that worked is that they go regionally throughout the state every so many years and allow the towns to participate. It allows the towns to purchase signs at the state's bid price. So, in turn, that made it so we were able to buy, um, twenty-four hundred dollars worth of signs for like eight hundred dollars. So, uh, working with the road commissioner, those signs were purchased, they're all stored in our shed out back. And then, we need to start working on installing those signs come this year. So, a thousand dollars was left in there for the faucet installation, but also in case we needed to get some, you know, a couple of individual signs or something. Tree trimming, this has been, we've made a lot of good progress, the road commissioner's done a really good job getting tree trimming done around town. Traditionally, we've been putting thirty thousand, it's been cut back to twenty thousand dollars, simply with the thought process that, yes, we need to keep doing tree trimming, but we also need to start focusing on some physical road repairs as well. Contracts and advertising, that was set at three thousand dollars last year and in the past. I have reduced that down to zero, and the reason that I've done that is that traditionally, contracts advertising, well, there's a line for advertising. There's a line for, um, engineering services, we're also a thought company, there's a line for engineering services. So, everything that that line is in there for is duplicated elsewhere, so reducing that down to zero. Uh, let's see, grading. If we do more road work, we are gonna need more grading and so forth. And we also brought, we all, we did spend that rate up to the limit already this year, so that's going from twenty-five to three thousand. Engineering services, we budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars last year. We've used that, um, rather extensively, and we still have only hit about the seven hundred dollar mark. So, the thought process is we'll reduce that by a thousand dollars down to fifteen hundred dollars, because that's, really, that's what all it really looks like we're gonna need for that. Paving, this is where there was an increase, last year, paving was at fifty thousand dollars, crank that up to seventy-five thousand dollars, thinking of some of that money we saved, you know, from tree trimming and so forth. The thought process on that is that the town has neglected a lot of the town roads for a while, because we keep getting hit with these other budget issues and so forth. What we'd like to focus on is areas like the Birch Point Road where those big cracks are, you know, fixing the cracks, paving those sections of the road. Mountain Road, not necessarily the entire road, but there's some areas that need some attention for general maintenance. Bull Rock Road, Brigham's Cove Road, Brigham's Cove Road, we shimmed it last year, but we need to still pave it. You know, different, different items like that, so that's the thought process behind the increase in the pavement. Special, special projects, um, this is where the, somebody beside me is probably gonna get excited. My special projects is, um, last year, we got a ninety-five thousand dollar grant from the Department of Environmental Protection, the DEP grant that we received. It's ninety-five thousand dollars to replace the culvert on the Sabino Road, which is wonderful, ninety-five thousand dollars is a big help. That is the maximum award that we could have received for this project. Unfortunately, bringing it to the engineer, still working on the details, it's, he feels this is gonna cost a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The reason that he feels it's gonna cost that amount of money is not only do we need to replace the culvert, but we also need to raise the road bed significantly because it's sunk into the swamp. So, this hundred thousand dollars on top of the ninety-five thousand is still a squishy number, but it's the number I was given by the engineer, and as we work out the details, hopefully, we can peg that a little closer. But he's feeling pretty strongly that's where this is gonna come in at.
And this is to fix the Sabino Road once and for all.
This is to fix the Sabino Road once and for all.
No, no.
It ain't gonna happen.
For about five years, seven years.
Yeah.
Nature takes over. It's like, quicksand.
We can, we can either fix the culvert and do nothing with the road, sort, you know, raising the road bed, but, but anyway.
To be continued.
To be continued. All right, salt shed electricity, this had to be increased from seven fifty to eight fifty-five. The reason for this increase is, you have a newer, bigger building, and, uh, to base this amount on the fact of how much is being used in these peak months, and try to come up with the average of what it's gonna cost for the year. So, this number is not a hundred percent exact, because we haven't had the building for an entire year yet. But this should be enough to get us through for the year. Streetlights, the streetlight amount has been increased by one hundred and twenty dollars, because the selectmen, uh, agreed to put that fancy new, uh, traffic light at the intersection of New Meadows State Road and Foster's Point. And that's about thirty-five dollars a month that we're gonna be paying for that. Uh, road, road, sand, and salt, we've, um, if projections continue to go according to what we're thinking and what we've used thus far, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for materials and mixing last year. It looks like we're gonna be hitting about two thousand cubic yards of sand usage this year. And forgive me, I don't remember off the top of my head on the salt usage, but putting in the budget forty-five thousand dollars for next year, which is a five thousand dollar increase, which the thought process is that'll cover the same amount of usage, but an increase in cost when we go up to bid next year and so forth. So, that's the thought process. Road plowing, the contract rate went from one thirty-five to one thirty-nine fifty, that's the, uh, agreed upon contract rate. The plowing for the parking lots stayed the same. Nobody's falling asleep yet, look, he's on the edge of his seat, this is exciting. Oh, I bet. Committees, the cemetery committee is asking for three hundred dollars so that they can put signs up at the, each of the cemetery entrances. Right now, none of those little cemeteries the town has to watch over have a, are marked. So, the thought is, we would put something similar to like your name placards that you have, like Lee Works Cemetery, and we can actually put that up so people know what they're looking at. Community agency donations, I'll come back to that one. A board of assessment, that's a particular committee, added sixty dollars in for postage. In the past, we've been paying for that out of the town's postage, but, uh, that was requested to do, so we're doing it on its own, and that's fine. Community donations. Bath Area Senior Center went from eight seventy-five to requesting nine hundred. Mid Coast Community Actions requesting fifteen hundred, which is the same as last year. Spectrum Generation is asking for fourteen hundred versus last year, they requested thirteen sixty-five. Sweets are stayed the same, twenty-two fifty-two. Bath Area Food Bank stayed the same at fifteen hundred. New Home for Women stayed the same at five hundred dollars. Patent Free Library is stating they're gonna have a two percent increase, making their new amount thirty-three thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This is an increase from last year of thirty-two thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars. They are voting tomorrow night, I believe, on their budget, and then will provide me with the information officially later in the week. I didn't receive, or the town did receive, excuse me, two other requests, Lifelight and Main Public Radio. I explained to them the process of the petition and so forth, they were not interested in participating in that process this year.
Why apply yourself, you know, in any way, shape, or form, it's only money, right?
Right. County tax, uh, again, much like school, we don't have a baseline at this point. So, I use the six hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars that was paid last year as the placeholder for this year.
I'm sure they're going down.
Can you repeat what, that's, what should I remember?
The six hundred thousand?
Yeah.
That's the county tax.
County tax.
Yep.
You're at the other end of this company, bro.
All right, next is economic development, Win Farm. So, we haven't contributed any money to this, uh, for a long time, not thinking that we need to this year. There's still a balance in there of about four thousand dollars, that should be sufficient to get us through.
They don't have to do.
A balance of four thousand?
Good question.
Yeah, I can get you an exact, no, I'm sorry.
Back to the county, have they, uh, I know, uh, this just came out, but they're looking reorganizing state and county jails. Anybody have a clue what this is gonna do for county charges back to the community? Well, uh,
I mean, our, our jail's a, you know, twin, twin bridge, whatever it is.
Two bridges.
It's gonna stack.
Our town, our town has some problems.
Says it right on the sign where you dropped off it.
Joel, uh, Joel the sheriff, I'm sure is gonna, he's, well, no, he's on the committee that is into this.
Yeah.
And he gives us a, he gives us a half hour rundown on what the status is, state wide, as far as the cost of, of jailing.
Haven't started meeting yet in the county much.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting yet, I suspect it will be April, in April, probably.
They kind of threw it out in the paper, and it didn't really catch too much. But when you start thinking about it, that is a huge budget, prisons, the whole state.
It is.
And how they're gonna merge counties in and make this a two-state, north and south kind of thing, and get rid of some of the county jails, not ours, because it's brand new.
You know, they threw it out right in the middle of all the noise, with all the municipalities throughout the state right in the middle of budget season, too.
Of course, of course.
But we'll, uh, we will be briefed by Sheriff Mary Uncertain of, and we in turn will come back and report here on what's happening, because that's a substantial, uh, figure. Go ahead, man.
Excuse me, all right, so capital, town buildings, this is the next tab. This is another one where, because of budget crunches last year, we dropped this from the budget. Uh, put back in there ten thousand dollars for this capital line. If you recall, this amount has been used in the past to, you know, to put new shingles on the roof of town office. It's can be used for just general maintenance of any town building, so.
You know the fine balance now?
I do not off the top of my head, but it is in your book, um, it should be under, under the expenses detail, we can, I'll, I can have that for you, though. So, that brings us to the end of the municipal budgets, again, to, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than last year, with the exception that does not include payroll increases. Another caveat, I haven't had the time to, the only person I floated this towards was, um, the chairman, Peter, regarding the Sabino Road and those costs, is, as we nail down those costs, is that something, that extra amount that we wanna talk about with the investment committee? Is that something that we wanna talk about, maybe looking at that capital account to help us pay for it, either partially or fully? But, um, that would certainly help with the blow of it, but that's something for a future conversation, I think, as we go through the process.
And, just for clarity, does that hundred and fifty increase include the hundred thousand dollars for the Sabino?
Yes.
So, that's a big piece of that increase.
It is. If you look at the increase, a hundred thousand dollars is Sabino Road piece that we talked about. Twenty thousand dollars is the fire department's capital account, ten thousand dollars is the town's, uh, you know, building account. So, when you really look at this, twenty thousand dollars is the only real increase we're seeing right now.
So far.
So far.
Thank you.
Yep. So, does the board have any questions?
You want this to turn if you want?
I'm glad to see the pages are numbered this year.
You know, David, your comments are always taken to heart. Um, just in the back of your book, real quick, you'll see that there's a budget history tab. What this shows you is, shows the actual expenditures for three years back and the actual budget for this year, just for comparison's sakes. There's also a tab for expenses by month. This shows you, you know, as a, as a, for instance, if you wanted to look at, uh, animal control and how much was spent, you can see how much we spent every single month on each of the line items in there. If you flip to expense detail, as the name implies, this is where it shows you if you were to look at an account exactly how mu- exactly each expense that occurred. So, every time we paid the, um, snow plowing contract, it'll be listed in there every single time one of those transactions took place. Donation requests, there's a tab in there for that, that's, uh, David's favorite part. All those, uh, individual donations I mentioned, all of their donation requests are in here, with the exception of the library, um, because they are waiting to square their stuff away this week.
Oh, and that's where you're looking at our donation, doesn't belong in the section. Four of us stand alone more.
Agreed.
It's a whole bunch of, it's part of education.
I like that even better. Contracts, in the way back of your book, that's where you'll find the contracts, and each one is labeled, you know, Bath, Ambulance, and so forth, um, when you get back there. So, I hope the book is comprehensive, I hope that it's, uh, worthwhile. As, as we get going through the budget season, I will also prepare some more budget comparisons and those kind of things, just for reference sake, for talking forums and so forth.
Revenue is where.
Revenue is not included in this book because it is not completed yet. I get distracted by, um, other matters, so I wasn't able to complete the revenue piece, but I'll have that in there for you.
That's fine. Got to explain why I can't find it.
That is correct. Doesn't exist. Um, on that note of revenue, if I may, traditionally, we see about four hundred-ish thousand dollars in excise, vehicle excise tax that we take in. So, when we look at the public works budget, we need to remember that that's where that money is coming from, is the excise tax. So, just food for thought.
Still is taxes.
It is still is taxes, yes.
Now, Kathleen, we're gonna go over this several times, and actually, you'll be tested on this. Now, Ca- Kathleen, we're gonna go over this several times coming, and actually, you'll be tested on this, right?
Multiple choice, yes.
So, this is, this is just, this is just the initial where this is, this is what Adam's called together and he's throwing a working car at us, and this is the first time I've seen it. And that's where we're at.
You know, weekends, or fires, they give fire permits.
Yeah.
You know, they get the internet and that's all in.
Steve, Steve was asking about, uh, under the fire department, where we used to have to pay somebody to be at the fire department on the weekends to give out fire burn permits. So, we stopped doing that, and the reason why is because of the online service that's free. So, that went through a process where the state tried to squash that and say it was bad. We have since then received a determination from the state that it's okay again, all is better. So, they're still,
It's still disgusting.
They're still discussing it again?
Discussing, yeah.
Well, they told us that it's okay to do and continue to do.
It's a union issue, it really is.
It's a revenue issue, is what it is.
It's a union issue.
It's a revenue.
Not with us, it's with people who have union fire department.
If you know that animation, that can, they, that's actually a topic in there, so.
What a surprise.
I can see what a permit costs you in Portland, but a permit leaves in the backyard.
These are, these are the state's only concerns, and I should go with.
All right, that's all I got for ya. Any questions?
So, we'll move on to other. Thank you, Adam, by the way, for,
Yes, what's that?
The, uh, excellent job you've done on the preliminary budget. Any other?
Yep. Let's see, we were, uh, you were a lot of partners, you mentioned something. Nope, workshop, so that was the only thing, you already took care of that, so.
Okay. So, in that case, do I hear a, um, was going to executive session?
I make a motion that we go into executive session at six twenty-five. Request to enter into an executive session pursuant to Title One, Chapter Thirteen, Section four oh five, six C of MRSA for the purpose of discussing the disposition of property.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I declare the regular portion of the meeting closed, and we will retire to the executive session at six twenty-five?